Good evening and welcome to the January 25th, 2016 meeting of the Florissant City Council. As we begin this evening, I would ask you to stand and join the council in reciting the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, if you'd be so kind as to call the roll, please.
Cyam? Lee? Jones? Egan?
Here.
Caputa?
Here.
Sheldroff?
Here.
Henke? Dabson? Pagano?
Here.
Schmidt?
Here.
Let the record reflect that a quorum is present. Item number three, approval of minutes. Before we make the motion on the approval of the minutes, it should be noted that at the January 11th meeting, there was a typographical error, and the typographical error listed bill number 9155 as 9135. It listed 9156 as 9136. That was a typographical error that's been corrected. The ordinance number is correct. With that being said, Mr. Sheldroff makes a motion to approve the meeting minutes for the January 11th, 2016 meeting. That is seconded by Mr. Caputa. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the meeting minutes have been approved. Topic, item number four, hearing from citizens. This is a portion of the meeting where you have up to three minutes to address the city council on whatever topic you deem important. It's not a question and answer session, so if you want a direct answer to a question, if you'll see myself, the mayor, or one of the council people after the meeting, we'd be happy to provide that for you. Robert Smith. Good evening, Mr. Smith. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and address for the record, your home address for the record, and speak loudly, I'd appreciate it.
Robert Smith, address is 2823 Chapelview Drive, 63031.
Very good. How can I help you this evening?
At the last meeting, there was an approval for a commissioner to the Florissant Citizen Corp Emergency Management Commission, Eric Thomas, and he is supposed to be a temporary commissioner and is going to be expiring in one year, not three years. Per the bill 9138, and it's now ordinance 8181, was an amendment to the commission's bylaws to appoint someone from another ward to represent a different ward, and he was appointed for that, for Ward 1, as a temporary commissioner.
Okay. We can take care of that.
I'm sorry?
The city clerk will take care of that.
Okay. All right. That's all I needed, just to make sure that was corrected.
Oh, very good. Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
John Engelmeier. Good evening, Mr. Engelmeier. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and home address for the record, I'd be appreciative. Speak loudly, please.
John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road. I'm here this evening to address the city council because at the last meeting, I was rudely interrupted and I could not continue with the conversation with Mr. Pagano and Mr. Jones on what you had to say. Again, Mr. Jones, your comment was to take the burden off the back of the taxpayers. I found out today, a sign permit is $5. The administrative cost has got to be phenomenal, and yet you said earlier, "take the burden off the back of the taxpayers." And, Mr. Pagano, you got very defensive with me because I confronted the city council on the bill concerning the renters, tenants, landlord issues. So at this time here, I duly respect every one of yous, but there was not one of yous that called point of order and you worked with the Robert Sools of Order. I've been chastised, I've been thrown down, I think Mr. Egan was going to have me ejected by the police, which would have been a very, very good battle ribbon for me, because I feel like I may be the only one standing here, but I will not bend. I'm appalled, I'm shocked, and as it begins this evening, you're going to hear me speak again. I don't like the non-transparency or non-accountability of this city council, and particularly the administration. I find it to be very unbecoming of the legislative group, and again, you are supposed to represent the city. Mr. Henke, at the last meeting, commented that he only represents Ward 5. When he took an oath of office, I think it was said, "for the city of Florissant, not Ward 5 of Florissant." I find that to be very shocking. I was going to ask him if you could remove himself tonight, because I don't have any touch of the talking with him, because he's from Ward 5. Terrible. Thank you, I'll be back.
Good evening, ma'am. I will try your last name, I apologize if I butchered it. If you'll state your name and address, home address for the record, I'd appreciate it.
Karen Schmansky, St. Louis Apartment Association, 12777 Allah Boulevard, in Creve Court, Missouri.
Very good. Would you speak very, very loudly for me, please?
Yes. I am here tonight in representation of the St. Louis Apartment Association. We represent approximately 105 various sized management companies, which equates to about 70,000 rental units in the St. Louis metro area. Currently, there are a total of 14 communities in the Florissant area that total about 3,800 rental units. So tonight, we're here to speak on behalf of the residents of the city of Florissant in the multifamily industry. An example of what the proposed initiative would do to our industry is as follows. Property ABC has 200 units. Currently, they pay $15 per year for their business license. With the new proposed initiative, it's going to increase that yearly fee to $10,000 per year. What's going to happen, that is going to have no other choice but to force that fee back to the residents. Then we have what we call affordable tax credit properties, and these properties, their rent increases are restricted by HUD and the Missouri Housing Development Commission. They have no choice but to absorb that cost into their yearly budget. What that's going to do, it's going to hinder the opportunity to, for any type of capital improvements, not to mention your day-to-day maintenance, interior, exterior improvements. We are here tonight just to give you a little bit of background about what the industry does for the St. Louis metro area. It has a positive economic impact from the apartment industry, which is helping our city thrive. The great news, ongoing operations and resident spending make each apartment community an economic engine, support local jobs, and is making a positive economic impact on the St. Louis area. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Good evening, Ms. White. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and home address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Sure. Michelle White, 20 Lambeth Lane, O'Fallon, 63368.
Thank you, ma'am.
I too am here to speak on behalf of the St. Louis Apartment Association regarding the proposed bill number 9135. We have some concerns with respect to the Hancock Amendment and violations of the proposed bill as it pertains to the Hancock Amendment. Number one, in the attempted definition of, the change in definition of property to include units, which is not sufficiently satisfied by Hancock Amendment. Number two, that the increase in fee is not offset and the existing base is being broadened. There needs to be, the fee, the fee needs to be reduced to yield the same amount as would have been received on the prior base. Number two, we feel that there's violations of 2003 laws that were enacted for fair ballot language, especially as it pertains to yes/no propositions, and sufficient information and definition for the voters to be able to make an adequate and educated decision. And finally, number three, is that we are working with Jeff City on potential changes to Chapter 441 of the Revised Statutes of Missouri as it pertains to rental property. Jeff City is in the, is currently in work with their legislators to enact a statute that would prohibit any municipality from collecting these exact types of fees from rental property. And we would ask that the board work with us so that we can come up to, come up with a resolution that satisfies your revenue needs, but doesn't impact the multifamily housing as it intends to do at this point. Thank you.
Thank you very much. David Forth. Good evening, Mr. Forth. If you'd be so kind as to state your name and home address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Sure, thank you. David Forth, my home address is 9 Woods Hill Drive, St. Charles, Missouri, 63303. Telephone is 314-346-5542.
Thank you, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'm an attorney, and I'm appearing here tonight also on behalf of the St. Louis Apartment Association, specifically to talk about bill number 9136, which was the one that you had mentioned correcting earlier in the minutes. It was adopted as ordinance 8195 at the last meeting. There were numerous issues that were raised because of the passage of this, and specifically the language that was used in it. The ordinance that was actually approved is strictly an ordinance generating a $200 fee that you all may recall for vacant buildings. The question is, that is already approved, it's already embodied in ordinance number 510.400, so, which that authorizes it to be done on a semi-annual basis. So there was some confusion about that, and I see you nodding your head, and I don't, I don't mean to direct, in a way, there are questions here that we're unclear about, because it appears to already be in existence in an ordinance. Secondly, the concern was the language in the memo that was attached, which we're trying to figure out if that's an implementing series of information that's going to be there, because that also then included a registration form, and it raised a number of issues as to how that is actually going to be implemented, because number one, it raised questions about a potential application, it said building or structure or any portion thereof, which would appear to include units. It also then, along with the registration form, did not state that it had to be for a period of six months. It also then removed the requirement that the property actually not be in compliance with code. So the concern was, if implemented in accordance with the registration form and the memo that was there, you literally could have a property that is not a derelict property, it literally just has a vacancy, and under that memo, as written along with the form that was with it, the city of Florissant was technically then entitled to a $200 fee in registering the property, and that would be for any apartment unit, as interpreted. And, and so it raised a lot of questions. We're very concerned about it. Obviously, it's been passed, but all that was really passed was strictly the ordinance to put that $200 fee on the ballot. So the rest of it, we're kind of in a state of limbo, trying to figure out, what does that mean for us? And perhaps maybe afterward, we can talk about it, or follow up and talk about it, but it's definitely a concern about that. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. Item number five, communication, and there is none. Item number six, public hearings, and we have none this evening. Item number seven, old business, second readings. Bill number 9153, Mr. Cyam makes a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Is there any discussion? All in favor of a second reading? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 6816 from Shangkey Dong, DBA number 1 Chinese Restaurant, to Yang Enterprises Incorporated, DBA number 1 Chinese Restaurant, for the operation of a restaurant located at 2738 North Highway 67.
Mr. Cyam makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? All in favor of a third reading? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing a transfer of special use permit number 6816 from Shangkey Dong, DBA number 1 Chinese Restaurant, to Yang Enterprises Incorporated, DBA number 1 Chinese Restaurant, for the operation of a restaurant located at 2738 North Highway 67.
Prior to a final reading on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Is seen none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Cyam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sheldroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9153 passes and becomes ordinance 8196, 8196. Bill number 9154, Mr. Sheldroff makes a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by my Mr. Schmidt. Is there any discussion? All in favor of a second reading? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill a second time.
Ordinance appointing nine registered voters to a redistricting commission.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Caputa. Is there any discussion? All in favor of a third reading? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance appointing nine registered voters to a redistricting commission.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Is seen none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Cyam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sheldroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9154 passes and becomes ordinance 8197, 8197. Bill number 9157, Mr. Lee makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing acceptance of ownership assignment of real estate properties held by St. Louis County Collector of Revenue through the Collector's Deed.
Mr. Cyam makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor of a third reading? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing the acceptance of ownership assignment of real estate properties held by St. Louis County Collector of Revenue through a Collector's Deed.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Is seen none. Clerk, please poll the council.
Cyam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sheldroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9157 passes and becomes ordinance 8198, 8198. Bill number 9158, Mr. Jones makes a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by Mr. Lee. Is there any discussion? All in favor of a second reading? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing the acceptance of ownership assignment of real estate properties held by St. Louis County Trustee through a Collector's Deed.
Mr. Caputa makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Jones. Is there any discussion? All in favor of a third reading? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance authorizing the acceptance of ownership assignment of real estate properties held by St. Louis County Trustee through a Collector's Deed.
Prior to a final vote being taken, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? If you'd be so kind as to state your name and home address for the record, sir, I'd be appreciative.
John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road. On this bill, 9158, I have applied numerous times to discuss these by vacant properties in front of the tax rolls. I received no response, and yet the city is passing one tonight. I don't want you to be different to get the government to welcome these properties, but I've applied for them before, and I've gotten nowhere, not just in terms of residential property, but vacant lots. Again, I'm just trying to buy them. And again, the city's got this proposed, I don't know what influence you have here, but as a private citizen, apparently that doesn't make much difference. I find it somewhat intimidating that they come before again, that the whole thing is that, am I, is it prejudicial, or is it, is there a compromise? Is this, is this steering? I don't know what this thing anymore, but I find this to be very discriminatory, because I have applied for this, and I have gotten nowhere. So I applaud the city for doing this, I try to follow it pretty close, and I will follow it close, because once again, the trustee properties are listed on the, on the website for St. Louis County, and I've gone there to look at the area of Florissant, and again, I have applied, and I've gotten no response. And again, one more thing, Mr. Sheldroff, I apologize, it meant to be say Ward 6, Mr. Henke's Ward, not your Ward, and any humble apology to you.
Clerk, please poll the council.
Cyam? Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sheldroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9158 passes and becomes ordinance 8199, 8199. Item number eight, new business. Item number nine, board appointments. Your Honor.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'd like to reappoint the following to the Environmental Quality Commission. Craig Andert, Ward 9. Ron Williams, Ward 7. Matt Krailman, Ward 2. Robert Parson, Ward 8. Tony Maldonado, Ward 5. And I'd like to appoint Richard Clark for Ward 3.
I will make that motion, that is seconded by Mr. Jones. Any discussion? All in favor of the appointments? Aye. Opposed? The appointments shall be made.
Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Bills for first reading. Bill 9159.
Ordinance authorizing an appropriation of $9,800 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 50654000, publicity for various advertising expenses for the Florissant Golf Course.
Mr. Lee?
Move for a second.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a second reading, that is seconded by Mr. Sheldroff. Any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President. I just wanted to, the council had a packet that was presented to him, I'm going to go back to the budget work sessions where we were looking at numerous changes of the golf club of Florissant, and if you may recall, there was a reduction in the, in the advertising budget at that time. We made numerous, numerous changes to the structure of the golf course, and when we looked at advertising, I actually, on behalf of the committee, asked if we could kind of hold off on advertising, let the new management team get together and discuss it and put together a proposal. I want to thank Mr. Ryan and Mr. Schmidt, who were in the audience tonight, for working and really doing a lot of work and looking at things that they could do that it's going to promote and advertise the golf course. And after several discussions with both of those gentlemen, I talked to the mayor, and then the committee took their recommendation, and we've, we've recommended unanimously the approval of this. We'll be asking for three readings, I'll be asking for three readings tonight. If you'll notice that a lot of these are time-sensitive, we want to be able to take advantage of getting these mailers in the mail in time, so that's really all I have. If there's any questions, the gentleman are here to answer them, but I think the proposal's very well, well-written, and, and I appreciate their efforts, so.
Thank you. All in favor of a second reading? Aye. Opposed? Please read the bill for a second time.
Ordinance authorizing an appropriation of $9,800 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 50654000, publicity for the various advertising expenses for the Florissant Golf Course.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a third reading, that is seconded by Mr. Sheldroff. Is there any discussion? Roll call vote for a third reading, please.
Cyam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Caputa?
Yes.
Sheldroff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Please read the bill a second time, third time.
Ordinance authorizing appropriation of $9,800 from the General Revenue Fund to account number 50654000, publicity for the various advertising expenses for the golf cour, for Florissant Golf Course.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, if there's anyone in the audience that would like to make comment now is the time. Sir, if you'd be so kind as to state your name and home address for the record, I'd be appreciative.
Absolutely. Mr. Egan, John Engelmeier, 1281 Graham Road. Tonight, I come before you on the $9,800, it doesn't sound like a lot of money. And again, I was at the budget sessions where there was a disgust, it was not implemented into the budget, and here we are, one month, and two weeks, three weeks into the budget, and we're coming back with a budget adjustment. I've reviewed, and again, Mr. Egan told me before that I rant on the golf course, and once again, I'll proceed on with that same rant. So far this year, this budget year, we've taken in $17,555.35. We have spent $112,104.81. That comes up with a deficit of $94,000 for a golf course. I talked earlier about taking the back of the, the burden off the back of the taxpayers, and yet we have a burden still. In prior years, I distributed the golf course analysis for 2013, 14, 2014, 15 years. In the 2013, 14 years, the golf cars, course lost $167,000. For 2014, 15, the golf cars, course lost $428,000. Again, the burden is on the taxpayer, and I don't know what advertising you're going to do. I applaud for advertising, because advertising doesn't cost, it pays. So when you say that, how are we going to advertise $9,800 worth? And how much advertising, that's a very small amount for a campaign to do that. I'm going through my files here. I pulled up the rates for the Florissant Golf Course, and then I compared them to the Eagle Springs, which is right across the road from it. I don't know whether the committee has done that or not, but the Eagle Springs golf courses' fees are much lower than Florissant's, and yet we're trying to advertise and bring generation to the community. Well, it's somewhat off the beaten path, more than Eagle Springs, but here we are tonight trying to advertise, and I have not heard anything in terms of how this is going to be marketed or advertised, other than the fact we're appropriating money. How is this going to be spent? Where is it going to be spent? What is the use of the marketing program? And who's going to oversee that marketing program? What parameters are in there to see if in fact this is money well-spent? Again, spending money's not the issue, it's the return of that investment, the cost analysis. What is going to go on? Who? Can anyone answer that at this point here? Before I depart from this podium, because I like to have a rebuttal time, so that I better understand, because at the last meeting, I was going to be ejected when I tried to confront Ms. Pagano and Mr. Jones. Does anyone have a comment? So quiet, this isn't even a funeral home. Well, I take exception to the suspender, I don't like it, but you know what? Every time I've appeared before the city council, you've, you've turned my request down with, and with no response. As I walk back out of here, I will distribute these information to anybody who cares to have it, because at this time, you don't care, and your fiduciary responsibilities have been compromised again by this administration.
Ms. Engelmeier, to make the suggestion I was going to have you ejected from the meeting, as you said twice today, is hypothetical and egregious. Good evening, Mr. O'Donnell. You'll state your name and address for the record.
Kevin O'Donnell, 512 Rancho Lane, Florissant 63031, Ward 4.
Thank you.
I'm, I've looked this up, I've noticed that, that $9,800 is going to go for our billboards on, along 370, and also a coupon booklet and shopper's edge. Okay? I have no problem with that, but the problem I have is that I sat here through the budget sessions, both of them, and...
sessions, both of them, and there was a subcommittee that was supposed to be put together to work on this, and I only know of one person that's on the subcommittee, one councilman. And my question is, I'd like to know, why is it that we have all these subcommittees, yet we've got, they're all containing nobody but the council people? We've got Traffic Commission, we've got the CPC, which is Citizens Participation Commission, we've got other parks departments. What is their input? Do they sit with their hands on their thumbs? I heard that the CPC, the biggest thing they do for the year is the Summer House Award, the Beautiful House Awards in June. This is a damn shame that we don't involve more city people in here. Now, if this was going to be allocated, the money was going to be allocated for advertising, which, I mean, I know we didn't know this, but this letter, this inner, what do they call it, inner office memorandum dated January 13th, was sent through the mayor, Thomas P. Schneider, to the Florissant City Council, copy to Randy McDaniel, Director of Revenue, and Karen Goodwin, City Clerk. My question about this is, why didn't they allocate $10,000 back in budget time? Why, whenever it comes to something for the golf course, it's never taken out of the golf course? Or golf course has plenty of money, they use the Parks Improvement Fund. But I don't understand why, less than two months' time after the budget was written and approved on November 16th, or, yeah, November 16th, 2015, and yet, we didn't have any kind of discussion about this, all of a sudden, bing, here we go, just like the things we're putting on the ballot. We have a ballot that we paid a election for that probably cost us close to $70,000 by looking at the city records. We've got $45,000, and then $100 that one of the chairpeople of Florissens for the streets said they, that the council all donated, added $100 campaign to that, where I found that that came out of the city coffers and went towards it. And if you can prove that it didn't, Ms. Bon Pagano, I'd appreciate it, but this is just an example of hiding stuff, shuffling stuff. Why don't we get, we've got these subcommittees, how many have we got so far? One for the parks, we lost a $20,000 tower. We've got one for the golf course, it's losing half a million dollars a year on average, $400,000, whatever, take the lowest bid. Anyway, and then we've got the housing situation, we've got a subcommittee for that, but here we are with the businesses again, 1963. How pitiful is that? 53 years and no increase. A $5 fee for a sign.
Kevin, please keep with the bill.
I'm staying with, this is all related, Mr. Egan, this is all related. You're hiding stuff from the residents, you don't tell them until the last minute, and it's put on the ballot. And then it's, if this was a three reading right away, why wasn't it put as an E, five E, bill instead of a regular bill? If we knew you wanted it to be passed in three readings tonight, Mr. Lee, you should have made this an E bill.
The E is just, the E, to be candid with you, Kevin, is just a notation from me that the clerk makes, but Mr. Jones has a comment?
This is all, this is all just smoke and mirrors.
Yeah, Kevin, if you and Mr. Wiffelmeier there would pay attention, Mr. Lee gave an explanation about the money that we appropriated, oh, the $9,800 bucks.
Then why is this money coming out of, out of?
Didn't you pay attention, Kevin? You was right there when we talked about it during the meeting, that we will get back to this, once we see who's going to take over the new management, and they sit down and decide what they're going to do with it. You need to get the stuff out of your ears, Kevin, because this stuff is spoke about, and you're not listening, and then coming up here and rambling, like we're hiding things. We don't hide things, Gav.
Mr. Honest, if I can call you by your first name, I don't believe that you stipulated any place for this money was coming from. Look at this, isn't this, isn't that true?
Mr. O'Donnell, please stay on topic, please.
I am staying on topic, that man is ignoring me. He's part of the council, just like you are, just like Ms. Bon Pagano is, and like Mr. Tamir Syam is. And Mr. Kaputa, you were insulted last week because you didn't reply to my email. This is all a bunch of, this city council's a joke. $9,800, what's it going to be next week? What happens with the six months runs out, Mr. Lee? Are we going to have another E bill come up? I'm sorry.
Thank you, Mr. O'Donnell. Mind-reading now. All right, thank you very much. Is there anyone else that'd like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9159 passes and becomes ordinance 8200-8200. Bill number 9160.
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Schedule III, Table 4A, yield intersections by removing Cedar Place Drive at Teakwood Manor, and amending Table 3B, two-way stops by adding Cedar Place Drive at Teakwood Manor.
Council announcements, Mr. Lee.
I had a motion on Bill 9160.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I'd like to move for a second reading.
You want a second reading?
Yes.
I apologize, Mr. Lee makes a motion for a second reading, seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion?
Yes, Mr. President.
Now, Mr. Lee.
Yeah, this request for a stop sign has been ongoing for several months, and if you noticed, they had, Traffic Commission passed it, asked for three readings tonight. We had residents that had come to the December meeting to discuss this because there was a problem on Teakwood, and we unfortunately didn't have a quorum and couldn't meet, so they were at the January meeting, and the commission passed this unanimously, and so I will be asking for three readings on this tonight. I really think that it's a safety issue, the residents pointed that out, and I think the commission recognized that as well, so I'll be moving for three readings tonight.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor of a second reading? Aye. Opposed?
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Schedule III, Table 4A, yield intersections by removing Cedar Place Drive at Teakwood Manor, and amending Table 3B, two-way stops by adding Cedar Place Drive at Teakwood Manor.
Mr. Lee makes a motion for a third reading that is seconded by Ms. Pagano. Is there any discussion? May I have a roll call vote on a third reading, please?
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Please read the bill a third time.
Ordinance amending Title III of the Florissant City Code, Schedule III, Table 4A, yield intersections by removing Cedar Place Drive at Teakwood Manor, and amending Table 3B, two-way stops by adding Cedar Place Drive at Teakwood Manor.
Prior to a final vote being taken on this bill, is there anyone in the audience that would like to make comment? Seeing none, clerk, please poll the council.
Syam?
Yes.
Lee?
Yes.
Jones?
Yes.
Egan?
Yes.
Kaputa?
Yes.
Shuldoff?
Yes.
Pagano?
Yes.
Schmidt?
Yes.
Bill number 9160 passes and becomes ordinance number 8, 8201-8201. Item number nine, council announcements. Mr. Jones?
I'd like to start off with, as usual, is if you guys could please make a donation to Team, it's a street over from here, there's always somebody hungry, morning, noon, and night, so if everybody got some little extra change in their pocket, or a couple extra canned goods at home, if they could send it down to Team, it would sure be appreciated. I'd also like to make an announcement that there will be a neighborhood watch meeting February 15th for everybody in Ward 2, and anybody else in the city of Florissant is welcome to come up. We're just trying to tighten up the neighborhood, I think everybody's been putting a little bit more effort in the neighborhood watch, not just myself, we're trying to start looking after our neighborhoods. But the reason we need the people involved, because nobody knows the front of their street and the front of their house better than the people themselves. So, it's easy for me to drive by, but I don't know the cars that usually sit in front of your house, so it's best off that we, the more people we get involved, the better we are people speaking numbers. That is February 15th at the JFK Center at 7:00. And like I said, everybody is welcome, it was mailed out to Ward 2, but anybody is welcome to come up. Thanks.
Thank you, Mr. Jones. Mr. Kaputa?
Thank you, Mr. President. Oh, yes, I have a couple things. FEMA is going around, the disaster assistant team, if you had any prior, from the floods that we had a couple months ago around the holidays, you can get ahold of FEMA, you don't have to wait for them to come to door-to-door, you can get ahold of them, 1-800-621-FEMA, or go to their website, wwwdisasterassistant.gov, and you can register online. Also, we've been getting some calls around, I have had several, that the IRS is suing me, so, I mean, there are some fake calls going out there, so be aware of the residents that are beginning called from this IRS and saying that you're getting sued, which it's a scam, so make sure you be conscious about that. The numbers came from New York, Clinton, New York, and somewhere in Arizona, so be alert to that. If you got caller ID and the number comes up and they say they're suing you, it's a scam, so just hang up and don't forward through with that. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kaputa. Mr. Shuldoff?
Thank you, Mr. President. I would like to congratulate Mary Gettermeyer, owner of the flower pot, for being the 2016 Business Person of the Year by the Greater North County Chamber of Commerce. She's a longtime supporter and organizer of the Valley Flowers Festival, and she works closely with the Queen in her court. Mary, congratulations. I'm going to echo Mr. Jones and Mr. Kaputa's side about our MSD issues. Anybody in Ward 5 who's had some problems with MSD, with claims, would you please give me a call or email me, 314-839-2927, or ward5@florissantmo.com. I walked the neighborhood around Elm and Valley over the weekend, making sure everybody did file a claim, and what to do if they're denied in a claim. And I've been working with Mr. Barrett, the city engineer. The biggest concern a lot of the folks have besides getting their homes repaired and getting some reimbursement, is how do we stop this from happening in the future? And Mr. Barrett and administration are working with MSD on that right now. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Shuldoff. I'd like to add that we are, the St. Ferdinand Charity Basketball Tournament is slated to begin at the end of February, I believe 27th of February will be our first day. Last year, we supported the Grace family. Erin Grace has neuroblastoma, she's a little four-year-old girl, and Down Syndrome. We had a very good tournament, and we supported their family. This year, as unbelievable as it is, there's another parishioner in St. Ferdinand, they have a six-month-old child, Nicholas Handing. Tom and Kelly Handing live in Ward 5, and their child has just been diagnosed with neuroblastoma. How little kids get cancer, I don't know, but I know we can get together and try to help the family out. The tournament will run for about a month on weekends, we have great barbecues, great basketball games. If you're interested in becoming a sponsor for the tournament or helping out in any way, jegan70@awol.com, or you can call me, 395-6838. We'd like to have all the help we could get out of the community, and if you can help out, and you can't get out to get the barbecue, at least keep the Handing family in your thoughts and prayers, they're going through an incredibly difficult time right now. Thank you. Your Honor?
Thank you, Mr. President. You know, I wanted to comment, the city has a lot of boards and commissions, we're very, very grateful for all the hard work that they do, they help us tremendously, and I also want to compliment the council for the subcommittees that have been so successful over the past year and a half in accomplishing a great deal. And I'm also proud that this city is very transparent, and any claim or any accusation that the city is not transparent is baseless. This city was one of the first cities to put their city council meetings on cable television, and still are on cable television. We are open to all scrutiny, we have hearing from citizens, we have public hearings. This is a very hard-working council, a very hard-working administration for the people of this community, and any accusation that anything is not being done properly is baseless. Now, in regards to the flood damage that we have encountered, the city engineer, Tim Barrett, tells me that, it's not a play-on word, but the situation with relief from the state and from the federal government is somewhat fluid. We have information changing every week, we have deadlines that are soft, there's a deadline this Friday on debris removal, but it's a soft deadline from the National Guard. We have put all the information available to our residents on our website. We have taken and given information to the Independent News, and Bob Lindsay has been a wonderful partner, a wonderful stakeholder for the city of Florissant and the surrounds. And Independent News was very generous in the space that they use in their paper to publish the information that we also have online, but we didn't stop there. Tim Barrett, our city engineer, along with MSD, identified the areas that were hardest hit. In general, the MSD gave us the streets and ranges of addresses that were most likely to have been affected. So, our city personnel today did what we call a lit drop. We use parks, health, and street department personnel to distribute flyers to the most likely affected areas in the city to make darn sure that our citizens have all the information from all the different relief agencies available to them, and that was delivered door-to-door It's winter time, and there's not quite as much going on, we have a little bit of a break in the social activities, but this weekend, we have two fantastic events, and it's great news for the events and for the sponsors, but for anyone that wants to participate, too late, they're both sold out. But I am glad to say that the Friends of Old St. Ferdinand Shrine, their fundraiser at Chemo's is sold out. This is the largest fundraiser for our beloved shrine, the shrine where St. Philipin de Chen attended a mass when the famous pioneer Jesuit priest, Peter de Smet, was ordained. We are very pleased that Archbishop Carlson, the Archdiocese of St. Louis, has taken renewed interest in the preservation and the expanded sacramental use of St. Ferdinand Shrine. And this year, KSDK meteorologist Mike Roberts will be the keynote speaker. Another event that's sold out is the King's Ball, and that is to benefit emergency responders. Their mission is to provide assistance, emotional, tangible, or monetary to any area first responders who have been injured, become ill, or suffered a traumatic situation after all the resources have been exhausted. The King's Ball, if you haven't been to it, is a good time, and if you want to help first responders, look out for tickets for the King's Ball for 2017, because 16 sold out. Thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor. The next meeting of Florissant City Council will be February 8th, 2016, at 7:30 PM. I want to thank everyone for coming out tonight, we have a good crowd tonight, and it's always good to see a lot of the residents here. Ms. Pagano moves for adjournment, that is seconded by Mr. Schmidt. Any discussion? All in favor? Aye. Opposed? And the council will stand adjourned.